Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the order of the Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District thirteen. Regular school board meeting of Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you call the roll, please?
Lerner.
Hi.
Larkin.
We're here.
Here.
Bartell.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Lee.
Great, thank you. Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values in this district are community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Our next agenda item is agenda approval adjustments announcements correspondence. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll move that forward.
Second. Motion by Laura, second by John. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Thank you. Announcements, November twenty-sixth, Wednesday, no school district in service. November twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, no school district office closed. December ninth, Tuesday, six-thirty PM, tenured teacher recognition, family center. December ninth, Tuesday, seven PM is the regular school board meeting here in the community center. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair members, there's no correspondence at this time.
All right, thank you. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly adjust the board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. However, the board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Is there anyone who would like to come before the board for this agenda item? Lots of people in the audience, but for other reasons, so I think we'll move on. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda consisting this evening of our personnel report. Do I have a motion to move that forward?
I'll move that forward.
Second.
Motion by Missy, second by John. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion is carried. Next on our agenda is acknowledgement of contributions. It's a resolution, but I need a motion to move it forward.
I'll move it forward.
One second.
Motion by Missy, second by Ted. Acknowledgement of contributions, whereas Minnesota statute one-twenty-three B zero-two permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district, request donation or gift for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District number thirteen that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of two thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars. Monetary donations, a donation of one hundred dollars made to Highland Elementary by Columbia Heights Lions Club for the fifth-grade dare program. A donation of one hundred fifty dollars made to Highland Elementary by Columbia Heights Lions Club for hats, mittens, and socks. Fine donations were made to Columbia Heights Public Schools for the cake at the all-staff picnic. Scott Birdell, twenty-eight dollars. Ted Landware, thirty dollars. John Larkin, thirty dollars. Missy Lee, twenty-eight dollars. Lori Meyer, thirty dollars. Laura Palmer, twenty-eight dollars. Value and kind, donation of a case of apples to Highland Elementary from Fallon American Legion Post five-five-five, estimated value eighty dollars. Donation of four iPad minis with protective cases to Highland Elementary from DonorsChoose.org, estimated value eight hundred dollars. Donation of the use of a gas grill and the bottled gas to Columbia Heights Public Schools from Heights Rental for the all-staff picnic, estimated value one hundred fifty dollars. Donation of burgers, hot dogs, and brats to Columbia Heights Public Schools from Bill Struff for the all-staff picnic, estimated value one hundred dollars. Donation of music for the all-staff picnic Columbia Heights Public Schools from Nicole Halby, estimated value of two hundred twenty-five dollars. A donation of gift cards was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Kathy Kelly for all-staff picnic help, estimated value three hundred dollars. Total fiscal year twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen monetary contributions to date sixteen thousand eight hundred sixty dollars and eighty-six cents. Do you call the roll, please?
Lerner.
Hi.
Larkin.
Hi.
Bartell.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lee, aye.
And that resolution is passed. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda are discussion reports and information items. First up, board members can report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Ted?
Well, it's only been a week. I did attend the Lions meeting and Chamber meeting this last week, talking to constituents.
All right, thanks. John?
I had the opportunity to go down to Columbia Academy for one of their proud presentations. They did a really nice job with it. I was at the Taste of Columbia Heights for a little bit on Friday night, and I think that's all it.
All right, thanks. Laura?
I have nothing to report.
All right, thanks. Missy?
I failed to report last week that I had been at a state association board meeting, and we had a lot of discussion on the delegate assembly and how it's going to transpire. Also, I have had numerous communications from people around the state regarding some athletic issues.
All right. My report consists of several meetings with superintendent, so that's my report. Superintendent Kelly?
Mr. Chair members, it has only been a week, but a lot has happened as far as I attended the Northeast Metro nine-sixteen advisory for superintendents meeting, and it was really focused on post-traumatic stress syndrome in students and what we can do for that. And in addition, secondary post-traumatic stress syndrome for teachers, because they find that many times those things are conveyed, the feelings are conveyed to the teachers, and they have now a new service at nine-sixteen that where we can call on their team to help us with some of that staff training. Another major portion of the meeting was focused on weather, imagine that. And we were really trying to get more scientific on our forecasting. So, we have met with the National Weather Service, and Hopkins is putting together a website. And it is more, not so much for the snow, but for the conditions of the windshield. And so, although there isn't joint agreement between and among districts because it's really dependent upon geographically where you are, there's been much more in-service around it and decisions talked about. There is a chain now that will go on. Most of this occurs at about four-thirty in the morning, and there's more of a communications chain with West Metro and East Metro. So, that was a big meeting for us. The AMSD Executive Committee met and focused on developing educational white papers for the upcoming legislative session, and when those are complete, I'll be sure to share those with the board. I had the pleasure of having individual orientation meetings with both our newly-elected officials to the board, both Molly Lewis and Grant Nichols, and I want to thank them for their time, and Molly's here tonight, so thank you. Director Holmgren and I began the process of laying out the capital dollars, or at least talking about the template of how the capital dollars would be brought to the board. We're using the ten-year facilities plan as a blueprint and then looking what else that we said to the voters is there. The idea is that on a yearly basis, we report to the board and have documentation on files. So, ten years from now, whoever is sitting in these chairs would actually know where the money went, so they could report out. And since the last one was in nineteen ninety-eight, it was a little harder to find. So, we're starting that template earlier, early. Met with the WMEP Superintendent Subcommittee on the school, transition of the magnet schools this afternoon, and there'll be more information on that in the upcoming meeting, so I'll defer that report. I did have the opportunity to meet with local seven-ten union president, and it was our monthly meeting, and we talked issues of mutual concern. I met with the chair and the vice chair on agenda and planning, and I too was at the Taste of Columbia Heights, and it was pretty nummy, so that's it.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have building vision cards and continuous improvement plan from the folks at Columbia Academy. And this evening, we'll be presented with information on these vision cards and the continuous improvement plan. We have Dwayne Burkas with us this evening, Willie Fort, and Mr. Otzby.
Chair Birdell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, we're here tonight, Principal Fort and Assistant Principal Rick Osby, to talk about two things, really. Columbia Academy over the past school year, first, and then secondly, our proposal for the continuous improvement plan for this school year. Just as a quick note at the start, teaching and learning has worked pretty closely with the middle school over the last two years on this, quite intensely last year, and that partnership continues this year as we work to have a continuous improvement plan that shows results, that moves us from where we're at to where we want to be. And really have appreciated the hard work, the support that comes from not only, of course, our principal Willie Fort, but also the assistant principal team there at the school, who was there last year and is there again this year, working hard. So, want to acknowledge that good work, want to also acknowledge the good work and effort of a very young team of teachers at the academy, who are, some of them learning to be teachers in not maybe the easiest place to learn how to teach when you are dealing with kids at a certain age. And it's been fun, though, to see the level of commitment, the talent, and I believe a very bright future for that school with the staff that we have in place. So, tonight I'm going to pass it on to the principals, though, to talk about this, and then I'll join in again at the continuous improvement plan, so thank you.
Okay, so the mission statement there, as we saw previously, core values, and our enrollment. As of today, six hundred and forty-three Columbia Academy students, thirty-eight achieved students for six hundred and eighty-one students. The demographics, we have thirty-nine percent are black students, thirty percent Hispanic, twenty-four percent white, five percent Asian, two percent American Indian. The free and reduced lunches, eighty-two percent free and reduced. Special education, seventeen percent. EL is eighteen percent. The Section A, if it's okay, traditionally I've done, discussed levels three or below. If that's okay, I'll do that again. We'll take some time so you can reflect on all those, the others, levels four and five. First one is use of formative assessment. We feel eighty to eighty-four percent of our classrooms do that. Most of our instruction is driven by the use of previous assessment, OPA testing, mastery quizzes, exit slips, and what have you. So, that's actually a pretty strong component of the Columbia Academy, teaching staff. The other one is the presence and use of classroom embedded twenty-first century learning. Based on our definition, we're not sure, one-hundred percent sure that that is clearly defined, what that means, but we do have a strong technology component. We have STEAM in the building, and we also have a strong technology component with the personalized learning initiative in two grades, sixth grade and seventh grade. So, we think that we would be on track in that aspect as far as use of twenty-first century learning. A nine, elements of STEAM. We feel that's a level three for Columbia Academy. We certainly have elements. We have the science classes, pretty strong technology component, engineering classes, art classes, math classes. And, but we still feel like it's maybe a third of our classrooms overall that utilize STEAM component. That would be fifty percent of students met their growth targets spring to spring. That was the goal. Did not make that goal. We had forty percent of students met growth targets. So, we were level one for that one. Give them a little time. The rest are all, B one is elementary. We didn't do MAP, right there what says the forty-four percent. We didn't do MAP. B two is elementary. B three, there is only a slight discrepancy in the different ethnicities as far as their growth, and we didn't do CBMs at the academy. Okay, B five is elementary. The next one was, says thirty percent, actual numbers were thirty-four percent in reading proficiency. B six is elementary. The next one is thirty-three percent of Columbia Academy students scored in a proficient range. So, we were level one there. Science was disappointing. It was a drop. We discussed this previously, actually a drop of ten points, down to fourteen percent. And you'll see later about our goals. We think we've have a realistic goal for increase in science when you see our SMART goals. SMART goal literacy, again, last year we're thirty-four percent as a district goal of ten percent gain for every ethnic cell. That is also our goal as well. Math, same thing. We were thirty-three percent last year. Our goal, every ethnic cell, ten percent this year. Science, this is, we made that five percent because, first of all, we had a ten percent drop last year, so we want to get back on the right path. Didn't feel as though ten might necessarily, we don't have low expectations, but we want to be realistic about our gains. We've had some difficulty staffing, some key positions in our building. One of those is science. We actually just filled one science position. We've had subs most of the fall, and then January, February, March, our key eighth-grade science teacher is going on maternity leave. So, with those things being considered, we made our goal five percent. We think that's attainable. Growth, last year, well, the goal was sixty, was, we made forty percent last year. So, we're making our goal sixty-five percent. We feel like a twenty-five percent increase in growth is feasible. Lots of continuous improvement strategies we use for math, reading, writing, and the content areas, doing quite a bit of test prep. And high five, you'll see that slide next. I think it's a strong component at Columbia Academy. Professional learning communities are very strong. They meet on a bi-weekly basis. Again, as Director Burkas mentioned, the teaching and learning department have been integral in providing leadership in those areas. Summary writing is done, every content area. Planners are used. Of course, the eighty-seven-minute blocks and the hugs strategy you'll see shortly for hopefully our literacy improvement. Professional learning committees, communities, meet twice monthly. So, that should basically, it says weekly for math, for math and reading, English, language, arts. So, that is a goal. That is not currently happening. That is something that we want to initiate as soon as possible. You want to?
Yeah, like Willie said, we'd like them to meet weekly. It's really trying to figure out how with their schedule that they have, with their supervision before school, some of the other things that we have, ask our teachers to do throughout the week, how do we also have them meet in PLCs weekly? So, we're trying to figure out how to coordinate that, and hopefully that will work out, because when they work in their PLCs, they're doing a lot of good work together and collaborating.
So, that's one that the staff really need to buy into it, that if they're missing out on supervision duty, other people are picking up the pace. We do want to improve in math, reading, English, language, arts, but that's, we need to come to consensus on that, so we're still trying to work towards that. Hugs was mentioned, and you can see it's highlighting the main idea, underlining the supporting details, glossing over the text to get the facts of what you've read and the comprehension, and then summarizing what you've read. Planners for all students. I think, and maybe you want to comment on this one as well, very successful what I see. This is an avid strategy that is already in place. So, when avid is introduced at sixth grade, Columbia Academy, a lot of, some of those things that avid promotes are already happening in Columbia Academy.
Yeah, we want our students prepared for class each and every day. The planner helps them organize their materials, so they are prepared, so they're ready to learn in each one of their classes. So, it's been a successful venture for us. STAR schedule, we continue students every day, twenty minutes of STAR, build that advisor-student relationship. We use developmental designs in our STAR, which really starts with establishing a community in the classroom in that advisory, also checking over progress, seeing how they're doing in their classes. So, they do like a circle of power and respect. They establish weekly goals. Throughout the week, they continue to, you know, hear announcements, what's going on in school, what's happening around them. They also are building relationships in those, building relationships with staff. On Thursdays, when we're doing our PLC program, we will partner STAR, so when one teacher's doing their PLC, the other teacher takes on an additional STAR, so it kind of doubles. So, they have two Stars in one, and during that time, the students are asked to silently read for twenty minutes. And the teacher also silently reads. All across the building, everybody's reading silently for twenty minutes. And then Friday, we come back to those weekly goals. We celebrate successes, you know, maybe look at where we are progress-wise in our classes.
STEAM, talked to Mr. Kennedy. He gave me some information. This is the third year of the robotics program. Robotics team, last year, they had fifteen to twenty students competed in the tech challenge with the high school, and they plan on doing that again this year. Regional competition will be at Columbia Academy in January. And the musical takes place December eleventh through the thirteenth, and the title is Schoolhouse Rock Junior. Technology, I know you've seen the presentation by Ms. Ochlager. You've probably seen all of this information previously.
So, most of that information then is really talking about things that started and were worked on last year. In addition to that, though, and many of those things are carrying on this year, we have a continuous improvement plan, which is new this year, required by the state. So, the next section of this then is going to talk a little bit about what are our plans, based on the data from last year, based on what we see as the needs, what we learned from last year in terms of our continuous improvement plan for this current school year. So, we're shifting gears a little bit here with this slide to a summary of things that were put in place last year to what we hope to put in place this year as a result of our continuous improvement plan. So, just in the next slide, then, you'll see what is required of us. And so, the test results come, this year again, came out basically in mid-October. And so, by the end of November, they really hope that the buildings that must write a continuous improvement plan have one. And so, the process that is required by MDE is that we do need to look at our needs and largely base that on our test scores, how our kid's doing academically on our MCAs is the primary way that we have to look at that. But then, based on that, we really need to be thinking about, so what are we going to do in response? And that is to be based as best as we can on research, so not just on our own ideas of what we think might work, but what does the research say would be a good solution for some of the issues that we're dealing with? And so, there is a looking at then, of what we look at, what are the, what does the research say? And then, we bring together a team of stakeholders to develop that plan. And so, it's not built by central office in isolation. It's not built by the principals at the building in isolation. It's built by teachers, administrators, district staff coming together to work on that. And then, that we need to implement and monitor our implementation to see, are we actually doing what we said that we're going to do? So, in this next portion, then, you will hear about our process at first from Principal Fort, and then what are the six action steps that we are proposing to take as part of this continuous improvement plan.
Okay, so our process, approximately two weeks ago, the team that's noted there, we all met here for four hours one afternoon, basically facilitated by some of the teaching and learning staff. It was an excellent process. I didn't, I was really surprised with how much we accomplished in four hours. The steps that we're going through is, first of all, this team met, we presented, and six of the members of the team on the left there are members of the leadership team. So, the key people were selected to be the, kind of the people to process and formulate the plan. So, those people, plus the administration, presented the continuous improvement plan to the leadership team. And after, leadership team, which again, was the same six people, myself and the other administrators, we presented to the full staff. Next step is presentation to the board, and then hopefully, based on approval of our plan, we go to MDE with the plan, and that's due coming up next week?
Yes.
Okay. So, there were three foundational components of a continuous improvement plan. And so, six teachers, administrator, we're in each, we're in each of the groups. You can see there, those are the, kind of the categories that we addressed. We talked about areas where we were strong, and we talked about some ideas and some things that could be done to improve in each of those three areas. We basically, and you'll see shortly, prioritized two ideas or concepts out of each of those three areas, and we came up with six. And so, what you'll see is a six-step plan. So, basically, those are the six there, and again, each of the teachers took a section of this and presented it to the staff. Okay, and action one is improve communication. This was one of the things, I interviewed every teacher in, at Columbia Academy, just school improvement ideas and ideas to become a school of excellence. That was the, that was the opening, an open-ended statement that we discussed. Lots of information was shared, but basically around the same themes of consistency, high expectations, and follow-through. And so, the clarity was a piece of concern. They wanted to be able to trust that we would do the things that we said that we were going to do, and this is what's listed in the improved communication piece. So, administration are responsible for those five bullet points there. I think we've made some strides, some successful strides in that area, and our plan is to try to continue that throughout the rest of the year and then into the future. So, that's one on a positive work environment. Number two is distributive leadership. If you're going to build a strong school, infrastructure, that's hopefully bottom-up rather than top-down, you need teacher leaders in the building. And our, we do, there are a number of strong teacher leaders in the building, and what we want to do is to have them take some of the responsibility. And they didn't want to call these, they didn't want to call them committees. They wanted to call them task forces. And the leadership team has already brainstormed and said, these are potentially some of the task forces that we'll have. If indeed this is approved tonight, our plan is actually to get started tomorrow and working with the entire staff on identifying either six to eight task forces, and then set some goals for those task forces and even get some ideas about who might serve on them. So, that is distributive leadership, the way that we see it, is building, letting teachers take more responsibility for some of the things that happen in the building.
Action three is sixth-grade daily math for all students. This would be an exception for the students that are in advanced placement or honors classes. We would add, there's about seventy-five students who have math every other day. We would increase their math instruction to eighty-seven minutes every day. And we would do that to match where they have been in the past as fifth graders. And we would do that to match where they have been in the past as fifth graders. We would also do that in an attempt to grow our students academically in the area of math. As Mr. Fort previously reported, about forty percent of our sixth grade students made growth in math. We need to increase that. One way to do it would be to add additional math instruction. So we would need to revise those schedules. It would also affect, we'd have to add some staffing, and we'd also need to inform parents of this change because it would affect some other classes. So, putting math every day for all sixth grade students. Action four is aligning reading, reading data to English Language Arts Power and Priority Standards. That's using formative assessments to, to really find out where our students know, using that information to guide our instruction. In math, they use mastery quizzes at the end of the week, so they're, that's another way to formatively assess the students, figuring out what they know, using that information to move forward. And then applying common reading strategies across content areas, and that's the HUG strategies that Mr. Fort laid out. These are effective teaching strategies that we want to use, not only in reading, but in social studies and other disciplines.
We actually have an in-service schedule tomorrow for, to help with some literacy strategies for all teachers, so that's on the part of our plan for tomorrow.
Action five, implement progressive discipline framework. We use progressive discipline at the academy. We would weekly run discipline reports, looking at students, seeing if they need some more support in the area of discipline. We would record, record and record and work with the ones that have maybe five to seven incidents. And then as administrators, we would plan a meeting to invest, to, to address what's going on. So we're looking at individual students who are having difficulty following the rules and regulations in the classroom, bringing in parents, bringing in their team of teachers, sitting down and strategizing how we can keep that student in class where they're learning, and plan and move forward, and then implement that plan, and then follow back up with those, with the parties.
So, so we've already realized some decreases in our referrals the first several months of school. And one of the, I think a major factor is the, we've decreased, cut in half the amount of time that students, when they are out of the classroom, they're returning a lot quicker than, than previous. So again, the achievement gap, and we're hoping if the students are in, in school with quality instruction, that there's going to be some academic gains. So that's a climate piece that we're trying to address. The check and connect situation, we had, we were fortunate enough to have a check and connect. Principal Robleski allowed a person from their check and connect program up at the high school to come down and talk to our leadership team. The team was very impressed with the things she had to say, the work that was done. And we didn't talk about it in, in behavior, but a fairly small percentage of our students make up a considerable number of our referrals. And we've done some things in elementary schools, by a couple of elementary schools to, like mentoring programs and what have you, to, to try to get a hold of what, to support those students. This check and connect program is one that I, I see as a, as a potential way to do that with that core, with that small core group of students, meeting with professionals every day to talk about their academics, to talk about their, how they're doing, about pers, you know, personal issues, what, what have you. So to give them the kind of support that they need, so hopefully they can be good students, stay in class, and be successful academically. So, we heard a lot of good things, and our hope is that we can have check and connect individuals down at the academy as part of our plan. That's our, that's it for our presentation.
Questions, comments for team at Columbia Academy?
Just to comment, I, in looking at the six steps that you have here, extremely supportive of the fact that you're working on the culture of the building, and that support of your staff, your teachers, if you have teachers that are comfortable in their classroom, knowing where to go for help, and you have a lot of new teachers there, they feel confident that there'll be that follow-through. I think a lot of these other things, you'll have successful buy-in, and I think you'll see some, some growth throughout the building as well. So I think you're certainly starting at the right place, that your core, your teachers make sure that they feel like they're supported and able to come to you. So I like that a lot.
Thank you.
I guess one, one other comment that I'd have, I'm glad to see that you're involving the whole staff in this process, because I, I think that everybody's more effective if they're part of the process. It's, it's wonderful, somebody who's actually working, you know, on the ground usually has rather innovative ways of being able to solve simple problems, so it's good to see everything involved. And I, I know it's a tough position over there right now, but I see some wonderful things going to happen. You're, you're building a good team.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, I would be remiss if I didn't say I'm glad you have a parent involvement committee as well, because I think that's really key in all our schools.
Thanks, yeah, we just, just met today and trying to figure out ways to, to improve our communication with parents, looking at maybe increasing the, the robo-calls and then some other, working with our Latino liaison and our urban liaison to figure out ways. We talked about breakfast with the administrators, that was done last year. So continually trying to keep our parents involved in, in the process of, of working with their, their students.
Absolutely.
I think building on that, with that mentor, that check and connect idea, I think is, you know, if you're not able to gather some of that parent involvement, that, that doesn't mean that the kids don't get an opportunity to have a good role model, and hopefully, you know, again, you'll see the behavior issues change. So it looks like you're going at it both at parent involvement, but also recognizing that sometimes, even with all the things that we try, there may not be some that, that come to the table for their kids. So you're, you have an option for those kids too, so I like to see that as well.
Well, I have complete faith in you that this building is going to be soaring soon, even better. The referrals coming down already is a, is a step of saying that there's going to be success. So I, you know, congratulate you on your, on your steps forward with Columbia Academy and involving everyone from the staff and hopefully involving students, because that's kind of your key right there, is getting those students involved to make it, make it, that energy flow into parents. So, good luck, and I'm sure it'll be very, very successful.
Thanks.
Thanks for sharing, and certainly sounds like a good plan, and now go out and execute. You're right?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda this evening is the disciplinary incident reporting system, or DIRGE. And with us this evening, we have Cole Helby and our K-12 principals.
Thank you, Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. We're here this evening to, oh, just squeeze in one other person. We're here this evening to, let me see, can you get that full-size, please? I don't know my glasses, I apologize. To present last year's 2013-14 DIRGE, the Discipline Incident Reporting System. It's a system that is required by the state of Minnesota for all school districts to report all of our, all of their incidents, thank you, all of their incidents regarding behavior. So this evening, we'd like to, thank you so much, Rick. This evening, we'd like to go over the report, thank you. And we'll start with that all of these wonderful principals that are accompanying me here this evening are creating worlds of opportunities for each and every learner in their building in support with the parents and partnership of our communities. The core values, I think, are really important to reflect on when we're talking about discipline and incidents of behavior, because it really is expectations that are set, and I think Principal Fort has done a fantastic job with both Valley View and the academy to kind of set the tone of what the climate needs to be like in the buildings. And you'll see from this data, and each principal will speak to what they're doing this year and how things are really looking fantastic this year in that area. I'd like to start with Principal DeWitt in Highland.
All right, good evening, Chair Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. It's a pleasure to be with you again this week. At Highland, we continue to address what we have known as frequent flyers, so students who have multiple referrals in a short period of time. So this year, we're really making an effort to bring the students to our students assistance team, to really get a group of adults brainstorming interventions that we can work on with these children, and hopefully develop plans that we can reduce the number of referrals that they have in any school year. But again, Highland continues to have a pretty low number of incidents per school year. Unsafe behavior is kind of our general category of, they may be naughty on the playground or push someone in the hallway, but not necessarily major incidents.
And then North Park, Principal Sausick.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. We're pleased to see that our incidences went down by fifteen percent last year, and that is solely due to the implementation of PlayWorks. As many of you know, we did away with recess last year, replaced it with PlayWorks, which is a structured playtime. It looks a lot more like track and field day every day out there for the kids. And we had seen that about forty percent of our behavior, behavior referrals in the twelve-thirteen year had come from recess, so we did away with it. And we decreased our overall referrals by fifteen percent. We decreased the lunchtime and recess referrals by over fifty percent. And we are continuing with that strategy this year, as well as, much like Highland, we are really working preventatively with our full-time, for the first-time social worker and a new school psychologist who is coming with, with some really brilliant intervention ideas.
Thank you. Principal Fort, Valley View.
Yes, I guess I would just echo what the previous principal said about, we monitor referrals on a monthly basis, we bring information to the leadership teams. We always say that we, as administrators, we like to know where the referrals are coming from, so we can, can support those teachers that, if they need, need the support, any ideas that we can present to them. We have structured recess as well. Our kids do, do have to make a choice about what they're going to do at recess, even though we've had a lot of indoor recess already. So we're continuing to, kids that do, as, as the other principals mentioned, the, the kids that have constant or more frequent than we'd like referrals, we do identify those students and try to come up with plans to address their needs.
Thank you. Assistant Principal Otzwee.
Yeah, at Columbia Academy this year, we started the school year off handling students who've been sent out of class differently. So really what we're doing now, in the past, the students didn't return back to class. This year, they're going to the success center, they're processing with a certified staff member, and then they're working their way back into class, back into where we want them. So we've really changed things around from what we've done in the past. Again, our discipline compared to last year is down at this time. It's down about twenty-five percent. We're working hard in our grade-level teams to continue to support our students, support students who need additional support, but also do everything we can as staff to support kids and keep them in class.
Thank you. Assistant Principal Awesome.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. One of the things that we've noticed is that our, our incidents went down significantly last year, and this year, they've even gone down at a much greater amount. I just did some data today in regards to this year, and so far, we've had about fifty-five incidents, which is down dramatically. And I think the reason for that is kind of the changing profile of the student that we're having in Achieve, as well as some of the measures that we've taken with staffing and some team teaching.
Thank you. And last but never least, Principal Robleski.
We're Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Our incident report has gone down from the previous year by sixteen percent. As you've heard, we've instituted or implemented the PBIS customized program called Real Expectations, the rubber bands that you received. We've seen a drastic climate change at the high school, and this year, we've implemented the first thirty days helping with the transition of our incoming ninth graders. That first thirty days has then parachuted off into the next hundred and sixty-eight days of the school year. So it's, it's morphed into a, a bigger program of, of just support and mentoring. We also have our link leaders coming in and helping with the transition of our ninth graders, as we've seen a decrease in the number of referrals with our ninth graders.
Thank you. And I'd just like to make some comments, and anyone can pipe in if they would like to. This is a comparison summary from 2012-13 to 2013-14. So we pull all the data from the two reports. As Principal Sausick noted, his incidents went down as well as the high school. I would like to comment that Valley View and Highland and the academy did go up, but their enrollment went up. Those three schools' enrollment went up from twelve-thirteen to thirteen-fourteen. So it's kind of unfair to, when you start seeing some numbers go up, when the enrollment goes up. We love to see when the enrollment goes up and the numbers go down. And Achieve had the very impressive reduction as well. I believe because we monitor the incident report data as it comes in monthly to the district office from the buildings, I believe so far, we are seeing, working with Coordinator Marsha Walker and myself and Rick Hammond, a reduction in every single building and program from last year. So I'll be very excited and curious to see our results, and look forward to presenting it to you next year.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a question here. One of the things that I was noticing is on the various reports, is, is the definitions for each one of those items are, is it district-wide, or is each school determining what kind of a category it falls under?
We have some state categories that we have to follow, and they give us very definite definitions on example for assault or something like that. But other things, it's the building leadership team working with the principal, because I like to give the example that defiance and insubordination on a pre-K student might look quite different than a twelfth grader. So it really is age-appropriate and individual, but certain categories, we have to follow what the state tells us for definition.
Yeah, because, I guess I was just looking, there, there are certain categories that always seem to be the high-flying categories, which would be, you know, kind of minimal incidents. Have we seen any kind of a, a trend where you could even break that down, so that there might be a certain type of behavior that could be focused on?
Yeah, each one of the buildings keeps very detailed notes. That does not have to be reported to the state, it's just reported by incidents. And I really liked how Principal Fort was pointing out that the amount of time kids are kept out of class, that's not reflected in this report. So if it's an incident where the student is just removed into the hall for thirty seconds, that's an incident, versus, you know, if they're removed for a whole block, that's an incident. So it looks, some minor incidents where they're not kept out very long and just processed and moved back into the learning environment can look exactly the same as if they're out for an hour or a block. So it's, it's really what the state requires, is what we have to report. The best information to get out of it is having the people up here, the principals up here, sharing with you what this really means. You can pull on MDE, you can pull the state and look at the different districts, and it really doesn't mean a lot unless you actually are talking to the people on the ground.
Thank you.
Just curious, does the Department of Education do anything with these reports, other than look at them, or do you know what happens after you submit them?
The only thing they look at is suspensions. They just post them and make them public knowledge, as far as the DIRGE, the, the incident reporting. The only data that they analyze is the suspensions.
If there's too many suspensions, would they come back to us and have a follow-up, or do you know?
Yeah, I'm quite certainly would, but we do a nice job here in Columbia Heights District, working with all the interventions and the PBIS models and the supports that we have to work with keeping kids in school when appropriate.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Next up on our agenda this evening, the Board will be presented with new suspended, deleted courses for the 2015-2016 school year. And we have Dwayne Burkus, our Director of Teaching and Learning, and Dan Roblesky, our high school principal.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the Board, pleased to be here with Principal Roblesky to talk about next year already, new courses and those other kinds of changes that we come to you with this time of year. Just as a, hmm, I'm stuck. There it goes. The, again, the mission statement for us, and I do think that this is a chance again for us to talk about worlds of opportunities and how we're trying to make sure that we keep that in mind as we talk about high school courses. When we're talking about, again, our academics, I think we're always striving for that excellence that we see at the second word. But there is innovation that also has to go into this on a yearly basis with our work in terms of what is the right set of courses that we need to offer. So, when looking at courses for the next school year, quite a few things that need to be considered. First, of course, are, in a high school, you are always going to have to think about the credit requirements. Our graduation is, graduation is all based on kids being able to meet those requirements. So, our courses need to be reflecting what those credit requirements are. That's really, I believe, the first consideration. But then there is, of course, beyond that, support that's needed for those students that are struggling. There's courses that need to be in place for them. There's challenge that should be there for our kids that also are excelling or have gone beyond even the grade level that their peers may be at. With all of that, then, the third bullet really, though, is where so much of our discussion is and has been over the past year and a half. Teaching and learning has been working very closely with the high school on what I know Principal Roblesky will refer to again, our early college program. And so, that college and career readiness is coming up in so many different ways, and how do our courses get our students there? Whether that is going on to a two- or four-year college, or whether that is to a technical degree, how are we supporting kids in that? Student interest is a factor. We do have lots of kids with different varied interests, and we do try as best we can to adhere to that worlds of opportunities in helping kids to discover their talents and unleash their potential. Balance, we do have those courses which are required versus elective. We need to have a balance, the right balance. AP classes, for example, that are offered annually versus those that are offered every other year. So, there's that balance also that the high school is always looking for in what they are offering. And then finally, tonight again, the newest component that really is going to be a factor, and you'll see that tonight already, the early college route for our students will require us to rethink our course catalog in a variety of ways. And you'll see, again, Principal Roblesky will take it from here and talk to you about, really, the first, the first implementation of, the first phase, I should say perhaps, of our early college program.
Board Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the Board. We have some changes this year to our courses at the high school. And one thing that we have looked at and analyzed is our leadership class, which is a year-long class offered to all our incoming freshmen. And we are going to delete that course from our programming, and we are going to realign it with our early college program, and it will be a college and career readiness support class. That class will have a flavor of support for our algebra. Its emphasis will be on math and algebra. It will also provide some avid strategies and the support that other students are getting in our cohort of avid students. And it's our first course that will support our students to the early college program. This first course is set up through Anoka Ramsey as a support, and what they've seen with the support with the algebra part is the success that students are having in math. And then, as you can see, it will help with the students who are at different levels of our math program as well. So, that will be an addition. All students, all incoming ninth graders will have that support. We believe that will also solidify some of our math scores as well, as we were preparing our students for the MCAs, as well as down the road of everybody taking the ACT course or test. Courses this year in our registration book that will be suspended, and I think there's some language here that we need to acknowledge, is that we're talking about suspension of courses, not deletion. And what has happened, as you see the, excuse me, as you see the courses up there that will be suspended, that's been through trend data that we've looked at over the last two, three years in seeing when registering and having these in our course book and having students register for these classes, that won't run. It impacts our schedule, it impacts our FTEs. It really becomes cumbersome and trying to figure out that formula in what classes we will be offering, pulling students out of those classes that have registered that won't run because of the number of students that have enrolled for those classes. So, basically, what we're saying is, in our registration book, as Director Burkus talked about, our programming at the high school is student-driven. So, that's why we look at these courses that will be suspended, not removed, for the 15-16 school year.
So, and I think if I could just reiterate what Principal Roblesky said, then, that this is for next year only at this point, where you won't make, we aren't making decisions about the year after next. So, for the 2015 school, 16 school year, they could very well be back in the 2016-2017 school year. So, but, so you can see that while that number, the number of courses that is suspended is longer every year, there, we're a small high school, every year there are courses, as Principal Roblesky said, that we can't run, either because not enough kids have signed up for it, or we simply, we can't offer every possible course that we have. But we don't want to take those off our books. We don't want to say, we like these courses, we think they're great. We don't want to say we're getting rid of them because it could very well be that next year, if we're not running them annually, maybe every other year, they are going to feel better. And we'll have the number of kids in those classes that really makes it possible to run them and have the FTE to do so. So, we come really then with just those first two major things. I would consider this relatively minor. Kids that are there four years should have access, hopefully will have access to these courses. But the leadership class will go, and as Principal Roblesky said, will be largely replaced then by the college and career support class.
All right. Questions, comments?
Just one comment. I know from my experience on the chamber board that many of these, I see a lot of trade-oriented classes, and I've heard that's where a lot of demand is going to be, and it already is in industry. So, just a little comment that I hope we have students that would eventually sign up for those. But I can, I understand it has to be student-driven.
And I do think the one thing, too, that's not here is, is quite, maybe we should provide it to you at some point, is the course catalog for the high school is pretty amazing to look at. The number of courses that our high school runs and is capable of teaching is, so the tech, technical courses, well, it looks like there's a lot of them that are being deleted. There's actually quite a few that are still being taught, too. So, it's a pretty, I would say, robust portfolio in terms of what we offer in our high school.
I obviously agree. I mean, it has to be student-driven, and if we don't have students that are interested in those courses, then, you know, it comes in waves and cohorts, and maybe some, some year, there'll be students who are interested in you offering the course, so, yeah.
I think it's really important to understand that, like you said, that you're not eliminating these completely. I think that really needs to be stressed, that the community understands that also, that it is student-driven, but these are not eliminated. We can always bring them back if there is a student call for them. So, we appreciate you bringing that forward.
Thank you. And that's, you know, one of the beauties that we have here at Columbia Heights is that we are using, we're suspending, we're not deleting, and I think that's unique. A lot of times, principals and directors are looking to delete. In this case, we're just looking to suspend because we think it's important, and we do have the staff that's able to teach these courses.
I actually have a question. It's been quite a number of years since I've had a student in high school. I know that sounds strange, I've got little ones, too, but what is English 10+ and English 9+?
Those are courses to help students who are struggling in English, and what the 10+ and the 9+ is everyday English.
So, we have other supports in place?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we'll hear from Bill Holmgren, our Director of Finance and Operations, and he's going to give us an update on how the addition down at Valley View is coming along.
Yeah, it's always fun to kind of look back at what we've done and kind of see the progress of this building project. I just wanted to touch on, again, we've talked about our mission tonight, you know, several times, but we're really out here to create worlds of opportunity for all of our learners. And we look at our core values. I think when we look at this new building project, we really look at community. This building is going, is a very nice addition to Valley View Elementary School, and it's going to be here for very many years to come and serve us very well. First, I just wanted to point out that we are on schedule, right on schedule like we planned. We are under budget, that is always good news. At this point, the building will be available December 15th for the staff to start using the room to move pieces in and get to get ready. We can't move the furniture in until the kids are done, so that'll be done on the 26th, actually, of December, we'll be moving all the furniture into the rooms, excuse me. But it will be available then January 5th for the students, so that's great news. The remodeling is still scheduled for June of 2015, and I'll, we actually hooked this to the same bidding, and, you know, last time we looked at Highland, we actually did it in two different bidding packages. Here, we did it all in one. So, all this, most of this equipment is already here. We're using our warehouse to take care of it until we're ready to install it and into the remodeling piece. So, it will be available then September 2015, both the science and the art room to go forward for next school year. And as you know, back in June, we started, we started moving, and started moving dirt, and it is surprising how things move along pretty fast. We had a very good year. We really didn't have any slowdowns, except for way, way at the beginning, we had some rain the first week, we kind of, we lost a couple of days, but that's all we had lost. We had a very, very good summer, and you see it progressing right along. It's, we had a joke here today at our construction meeting, like, what's like we almost, we did this before? Well, we did. So, it's kind of, it's really a mirror image of what we did. So, we really didn't run into any issues. Here you see, we did put a whole new storefront on the back entrance, and it turned out very nice when we look at new windows over at Valley View Elementary School. So, now, and actually, we were closed up before the snow came, so the snow really didn't give us an issue. We even had all our sod down beforehand. So, this is what it's looking like here a week ago, and it's, it looks like it always should have been there. It turned out very, very nice. So, you see now the interior, this is in the hallway in the middle, you see the grids going in for the ceiling. Most of the heating, plumbing, electrical is in. You can see they're putting the grids in the classrooms. Here, we got, you see the light starting, the light's starting to show up. Here, the heating just got put in along the outside wall. This, of course, will be covered with cabinetry here next week. And they started putting tiling into the bathrooms. They certainly aren't done yet, but looking very nice. Here's one of the rooms that did have the cabinetry put into the corner. And like I say, if you look, if you think back, when you went in Thailand and looked, I mean, they're really, I mean, they're pretty much identically the same. Here's a bathroom that's done being tiled on the walls. So, it's very busy, we have a lot of people coming and going. Here, we got the grid out in the center hallway, you can see where the sun has been put in. It's kind of a nice little touch that we did both at Highland and here at Valley View. So, anyway, like I say, we're right on schedule, and is there any questions at all?
I don't think any questions. It looks great.
Yeah, it really does look wonderful. Did we find any more space like we did over at Highland?
What do you mean more space?
By the conference room?
Oh, yes. Back during the remodeling for next summer, in the, between the art room and the science room, there will be a new conference room put in. It'll look the same as Highland. It's a very nice little space to kind of, we'll be able to grab onto and give them a good place to meet. So, yes, that will be done the same.
I would just like to add that there will be a ribbon cutting ceremony. We will be planning that with the building for later in the year. We found with Highland that it was much more advantageous, both the teachers and the students, to set up the rooms and have business going on as usual, so that the community could come in and see it as it would be operational rather than imagining it.
All right. Well, thanks for the update.
That's all I have. At least you have an idea what it's looking like.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda, we're, the Board will be presented with information on WMEP, the West Metro Education Program, and we have Bill and Superintendent Kelly.
Mr. Chair, members, Bill and I are here just as an information item because we've done a lot of this discussion on the history of WMEP and some of the current issues that are going on at WMEP at our School Board Work-Study Session. But we also want to make sure that we're having some of the discussion at our, as information items in our School Board meetings that are televised. Really, there's two things tonight to talk about, and that is the Joint Powers Agreement, which establishes member districts as a unit of joint powers, and then what people, what the process is for deletion from the joint powers. And then also to talk briefly about the conveyance or discussion around the schools. And so, in front of you, you do have the Joint Powers Agreement. You've looked at it at the work-study, and it was also sent out to you in the, in my superintendent's update. The subject and question, if you're looking at it in front of you, is really Section 5, and we'll get there in a minute. There is some discussion among member districts regarding withdrawal and what that would mean. There's also other districts outside of WMEP that are discussing other options that might be possibilities with member districts, and that should be put to the fore, that there are other options, and that a school district only needs to collaborate with one district as long as one of those districts is an isolated district, of which we are one of those districts. There has been discussions before in the superintendent's update, and I would just like to say again that the district administration is exploring those other scenarios that may be advantageous to the students in this district. And we are also exploring how other districts have effectively formed collaboratives in the past that have only been two. A good example of that would be a few years back, probably more than a few, probably eight years back, North St. Paul and Monamie Day declared they were leaving the East Metro Integration District and formed a collaborative of two. And so, we would like to look at that. And then I think I've alluded in past reports that the districts of six that have collaborated on the Joint Powers Agreement around post-secondary success on this side of the river are talking about perhaps an innovation zone or a collaborative district based around that where the money is poured into student success rather than concrete facilities. And so... And so, that is, that's on the table, and I wanted to make sure we know it. But if you, if you look at the agreement itself, and when I looked at that, I want to make sure, and I had a conversation with Member Landworth before the board meeting, that was really insightful, and I wanted to bring forward that this is not just a document for membership on the board, but it is our Joint Powers Members Agreement, meaning the member districts. And it is the only document that has been around, although modified since 1995. And so, in the very first paragraph, it is the Joint Powers, when they're talking about members, it is the member school districts of which we spend, we send a member to the Joint Powers Board. And in Section 2, when they're talking about the purpose of this agreement is to establish a governing organization through the members, that is really the members again of the member districts. In Section 5, any, and that is member district, may withdraw from the West Metro Education Program. And there is a process in place, and I wanted to make sure, since in 2012, the board that was intact at that time passed and agreed, passed a resolution and agreed to this change. In the past, before this, it was you had to tell the WMEP Joint Powers Board Chair by February, and then there was an 18-month window. Minneapolis really had a lot of discussion about how that was way too long for any member district to really come to closure with the organization, and insisted that if that wasn't changed, that they for one were going to leave the organization. The other member districts said, and I remember Lee was on the board at that time, that what is good for Minneapolis should be good for the other districts. And so therefore, member districts insisted that if Minneapolis was going to have that condition of leaving, that, or adding, that other member districts should as well. And so, it was changed, and I did look it up in the last week, that we passed a resolution, and then the Joint Powers Board passed this resolution that changed the date. So if members, if member districts are thinking about deletion from the joint powers, that the resolution, a resolution withdrawal should be given to the WMEP Joint Powers Chair by December 30th, on or before. When I was reading the background information that came with that, there was really a lot of discussion in then Superintendent Jett's memo that it was probably be readily apparent that board, that the school districts thinking about leaving should be discussing that in advance. What I did say, because we have complications this year with our integration grant from Dr. Parks down at the Minnesota Department of Education, is that she's really insisting that we look to other districts because she feels our diversity is such that it may not be in the best interest of integration practices to be exclusively collaborating with Minneapolis, because we are more diverse than Minneapolis. And so I've had that conversation with Superintendent Lester, and since the WMEP integration dollars that we work collaboratively through schools is one thing, our integration dollars total coming in from the state, well over $900,000, and we don't want to put that in jeopardy. So it is a catch-22 for us, but we have to look at the finances on this side as well as for the organization. If at any point in time, any member district would give the withdrawal resolution from their full board, that would be effective June 30th of the school year of which it was given. And so that really shortens the timeline around, but it also helps with staffing and with finances. So there is that, and there was that change, and I wanted to bring that forward so that we were all on the same page with that when we're, when we are talking about things. The other topic of discussion is really the disposition of the magnet schools. And it is not one that is new to us. I looked back, and really Dr. Green, in 2009, and Missy was on the board at that time, and some of you were on this board at that time, really made it quite clear through a visioning process from Minneapolis schools that, that he felt that the schools should be conveyed to other districts, and that WMEP should move to a 2.0 that was more focused on staff development, student programming, in the general sense that catered to or supported the other 100,000 students that were in the resident districts, and not just the 1%. I pulled that out last week and reread it, and really, he was a man of vision at the time because some of the things that he was talking about in that memo, and at that strategic planning retreat, really are the same things that we're talking about today. So he really arrived at some conclusions probably ahead of the rest of us. And when you, when you look at that, Columbia Heights Public Schools has 36 students going to the two magnet schools, and it amounts to $270,000 worth of tuition that is paid out of the general fund for those students to attend. When you look at the Fair schools, some of the questions that were asked were, do the schools serve the mission of West Metro Education Program when they were first conceived? And are they serving their original purpose? And should WMEP be running those schools, or is there a value added if other districts would run them? The options laid on the table at that time was to, this year was to continue, for WMEP to continue to run the schools, to find other organizations to manage the schools, or to convey the schools to a member district. And both Minneapolis and Robbinsdale are interested in the conveyance of the schools. In addition to that, if we were going to convey them or sell the schools to anybody else, they would have the right of first refusal. The city of Minneapolis owns the land under the downtown school, and Robbinsdale owns the land under the Fair School. The legislature has a stake in the game, because they hold the bonds. So any money from the sale of those schools would go right back to the state. And so, really, if the schools were to be conveyed, they would have to go through the legislative process, just like the East Metro Integration District did, when they conveyed Harambe to the Roseville schools, and conveyed the Crosswind schools to the Purpatch Magnet School. And so, although a more complicated process when dealing with the legislature, they have been through it down there before, and so there is legislation that has gone, there is a precedent set. And some of the things that have been conveyed through focus groups and the superintendent's reports, but also, I think that the Joint Powers Board has been talking about for a number of years, at least since 2009, that the schools are not serving the mission of WMEP. When you go back to the original purpose, which I will in a minute, they were really put together for a specific purpose of which that never happened. There are less than 1,000 students that are being served at these two schools, and there, as I said before, 100,000 students that are between and among all the member districts that really question whether there's a value-added component. The strongest option at this time appears to be, and I wanted to make this board aware, the conveyance of the schools in a manner used by the East Metro Integration District. And after our last board meeting last week, Ted and I sat and talked after class a little bit about how that seems to be a conclusion by a lot of the member districts that perhaps conveyance of the schools might be a direction we might want to consider. The original purpose of the schools was to create integrated schools that would serve as lab schools. And for those of you that were around in 1998, maybe Member Landworth remembers that, I happen to remember that because I was just coming to the district at that time. We had some of our own staff that went down, Sue Powell was one of them, if you remember Sue Powell, who taught at the Downtown District School when it was first opened. She had an option to come back to this district after a number of years. But what, what never happened is that other districts, other teachers went down there and served in a lab capacity, and the staff development as a lab school never matured. What happened instead, and it's only fact, it's not a declaration of on one side or the other, a pro or con, is that the schools actually formed a teachers' union of their own, and with their own agreements, and wanted stability, and they didn't, the teachers down there at that time did not necessarily want to be coming back to their home districts. And they did not necessarily want to be lab schools where people came and observed what was going on down there either. The art schools were very successful, that component of it, creating two fabulous art schools eventually. The Downtown School originally floundered a little because it was a business school, and then it thought, you know, maybe we should articulate these schools together. The third school, which was a Spanish magnet, never materialized through the legislature, but there was supposed to be a Spanish magnet out in St. Louis Park, and that never materialized at all. So the concept really ended in 2005. And while the schools are integrated, the member districts look much different than the two schools. And actually, there are many member districts of which this one conveys all the time the thought that our own schools are more diverse and have more unique integration experiences than, for instance, the Fair School, Crystal, which is 70% Caucasian and 30% minority. And that has been a bone of contention, both with more diverse districts and with the Minnesota Department of Education, because they feel that it's probably not as integrated as it could be either. As a practical matter, and we saw it at our own high school, is that enrollment is based on those students who are interested in the arts. And so, it's not a quota system, and so, many times, we have, it's beyond their control who signs up for the schools. Cost and practicality do enter into this discussion around management agreements. And one thing that we have been very successful in this district, and thanks to the voters and to the board, that we did pass a capital dollars for our 50-year-old schools that need to be repaired. WMEP has no levy authority, and has schools that are now 20 years old. And some of those repairs that we're talking about, capital repairs, need to be addressed. And if you look at, and Bill is here tonight, but when you look at our capital dollars, we're looking at them for our facilities plan, but if we were to use capital dollars, it would come right out of our general fund probably for what would have to go down at Fair. And many schools that are at the cap, school districts are very concerned that they don't have the kind of dollars to expend on the repairs that need to happen to the schools. And so, nor do they have the excess in their general fund, Fund One, to support that in the long term. So that's an issue. The other point is with the two schools, is if you looked at their last year's budget, one over $1.2 million was spent in administrative costs for the two schools. And the point being made there is that if, if the schools were part of a larger school district that already had a superintendent, that already had an HR department, curriculum directors, staff development people, that that kind of staff development and training could be absorbed by the member districts of which they were a base. And there's the blinding glimpse of the obvious, that the fund balance at the West Metro Education Program has been severely impacted by legal fees. And so what might have been there to support both program and capital outlet issues has been decreased. So whatever is done, there seems to be a consensus that students and staff at those buildings should be held harmless, and that their parents should have the assurances from member districts that the work of the order would be to make sure that if they were in a program right now, that they would be able to matriculate out of those programs in the future. And so that would be the work of our board, that if we have now currently 36 students between the two schools, that if they were enrolled, and this doesn't talk about sibling preference, but because Fair doesn't do sibling preference, but if they were enrolled, that we would support the transition so that those students, and a good analogy would be, is that they'd have a soft language landing, so that even if the management changed, the parents and the students should not feel it any differently. So that is where we are at with that. I was, I'm on the subcommittee for what we call conveyance or soft landing of the magnet schools. And there's a lot of legal things that have been looked at by both the Minneapolis District and the Robbinsdale District because they have right of first refusal, and are the most logical districts to convey the schools to. And so that work will go on. But wanted to make sure that, you know, that in December and probably early next year, the schools, well, the determination of the schools will probably need to be resolved. And whoever is the representative for WMEP next year on that board will need to be informed by this board what our opinions are on the conveyance. The Joint Powers Board is somewhat asking, and at least Superintendent, interim Superintendent Lester is asking for that to happen sooner rather than later, so that they have an idea if they should work on a resolution and work on legislation with the legislature in the upcoming legislative session. So what I have heard is that if the WMEP Joint Powers Board wanted a resolution or a motion from all of the different boards, that they might be calling upon us to, in other words, send a motion or a resolution on what our position might be on the conveyance of the schools. And that would probably be the work of the first order. And then the whole disposition of WMEP itself, and what the organization does beyond that, would be the work of the second order. So that's our piece at this level of what's going on with the WMEP Joint Powers Board. But Ted, who sits on it now, and Missy, who sat on it for many years, know that member district, our, our, our Joint Powers Board member needs to convey what is thought of in our, in our district to that board. So, very important work in WMEP, both in 2014 and in 2015. I don't want to put Bill on the spot, but is there anything else that you'd like to add from the, from, to the report now? Or are there any other questions that Bill and I might answer for the board?
I guess, you know, from my point of view, the things that worry me are the capital pieces that need to go into those buildings. And you look back at how they've charged us over the years, all the, all the components that we get for students, they've taken. So, so the components that we get towards capital, they've got that over the years. So if they would have set that aside for capital, they would have had quite a few dollars available. And of course, that's not the way it is. And Kathy had asked me a question earlier today, asking about, you know, how, what components do they take? And they take every component, including our operating levy. The only piece they don't take is our compensatory dollars. Okay, so every single dollar that we would collect here go to them, okay? So it is, it is relatively expensive when you look at this, I mean, just an open enrollment student doesn't cost those kind of dollars, because not every component follows those students, where this one does. Okay, so when we talk about $270,000 going, it is $270,000.
Are we sending additional dollars in addition to what they're taking then? I mean, is it?
Just, what the answer is yes, and what they've done is taken, they've set aside, out of our integration dollars, we pay $19 for every student that we have here in our district to them. So that's another $66,000 that we pay out besides the tuition that we pay for them.
Is that part of that $270,000, or that's in addition?
It's in addition.
So we're, okay.
I have a question, not, maybe, part of the same discussion here. If we were looking at doing some sort of another collaboration, you had mentioned that you were looking at some, that possibly something that wasn't, you know, brick and mortar. It was more a collaboration of ideas. It was more a collaboration of ideas. Would you be able to kind of give me kind of an idea? Yes?
I could, and that's a very good question, Member Palmer. We have to look only to the Northwest. When, after WMAP was established and then the East Metro followed the same pattern and they had bricks and mortar. The Northwest Collaborative decided that they looked at those models and they said they didn't want to put money into bricks and mortar. And so, what they would do is put it into programs. So, they, and by that, I don't know all that are in that collaborative, because I don't follow it as closely, but they started with Brooklyn Center, who has a foot in both WMAP and Northwest. And they have a collaborative of school districts that instead decided they would invest in each school, each school district having some kind of magnetizing program. The first one that I could remember is that Fridley decided they were going to be an international baccalaureate school and that they would build that for their students, but if students from other districts wanted to come within that collaborative, that they would use the transportation aid from the state of Minnesota through integration districts to transport those students. The last one I think you've seen was Mounds View, because when Mounds View was trying to decide, because for years, Mounds View during the Dr. Keldor years was trying to decide if they needed, because we were isolated, if they wanted to collaborate with us at West Metro or if they wanted to go with a different collaborative. And the feeling at that time is that they did not want to look to the West, because they felt that they didn't have as much, and I'm only saying this because Dan Hooverman and I were both in teaching and learning at the same time, working on these agreements. And they felt that they had more in common with people on this side of the river than they did with Eden Prairie, Edina, et cetera. So, what they decided to do with theirs, they did join that collaborative and they took their magnet money and created the first career in college-ready post-success high school. And that is the model that we're emulating right now. And so, they poured that money into their programs and they really, because they have two high schools, wanted to see that they had the two high schools moving back and forth and that if other member districts wanted to send students, that would be fine with them if they had room in their program. And so, to carry, make a long story even longer, when we started looking at forming our own post-secondary success program here in the Heights, we found that it was hard to find a collaborative partner, because the only college that was really wanting to collaborate was Anoka Ramsey. And so, the superintendents got together on this side of the river and said, you know, there's strength in numbers. If Anoka Ramsey would collaborate with the six districts, just like they did for the Mounds View Magnet Program, if they would do that, that would give all of our students on this side of the river in those six districts the opportunity to access through Anoka Ramsey, the concurrent enrollment classes. And so, that's what kicked off our joint powers agreement. So, those are programs that are programs without walls. That, and where we see that one going, really with our joint powers agreement, is that we would all offer the same kinds of opportunities in our district for our students. And collaboratively, we could do joint curriculum, staff development, share teachers, work on certification. And we're not necessarily looking at kids moving back and forth, but that through teleconferencing and things like that, we could provide the virtual classes or the certified teacher to more. And that not every district would have to be developing its own concurrent enrollment class of physics, but that a group of teachers could do, work on one thing and somebody else work on something else and it would be shared. North St. Paul and Monomeda did the same thing about eight years ago with EMI. And instead of creating, they pulled out of the schools and put the money into their own programs in the district. So, those are some of the things that are not bricks and mortar. It seems to make a lot more sense to me. So, those are the examples that are out there. Ted, you're on the Joint Powers Board. Is there anything that you would add? Because I know you and I had an extensive conversation. I don't want to put you on the spot, but is there anything else from your perspective as our member?
The only thing I would add is the timing of the decisions, whether to remain in WMAP or not. And the status or the character of WMAP is being kind of driven by Superintendent Lester's contract ending and whether to hire a superintendent again, to superintendent district, or to hire an executive director to manage a program. And so, that decision has to be made around March, because that's the season for hiring. And so, just want to add that that's an additional wrinkle that we're wrestling with as a board.
Any other questions for us?
You're obviously exploring other options and, you know, for our district and how, without putting you on the spot, how far out are at least concept ideas are to be brought back to us to, I mean, if nothing else, would be to maybe to help facilitate if they're under some timelines, if it was something we decided that we wanted to remove ourselves from it. And we obviously would have till December of next year at this point, but could let them know sooner too if that was a direction we went. So, back to the original question, information being brought back on the different ideas, timeframes?
I'm of two minds on that and I will be happy to share it, I think. The first thing is we have been in WMAP, since 1995, I arrived on the scene in 1998. And there is, I think, a good faith effort to develop WMAP three point oh. And I think that we should be measured in our deliberation to see what they're moving toward as well. But I think the first hurdle for most districts around the table will be what will happen with the conveyance of the schools. And I think that makes a big difference, because some schools are saying if they don't convey the schools, that they are definitely looking for other collaborative partners, because they cannot, although they will hold the students harmless that are there, can't afford the crush of the capital dollars and the tuition in the future. And other school districts are quite, the last year or two that we've, with all, well, it's been longer than that, the last four years where there's been the crush of the personnel issues for some school districts has been a little concerned. And so, they're thinking that the mounting legal bills and stuff like that, that perhaps they want to sever. So, I think, having said that, the superintendents are meeting much more frequently than they have in many years around all of those issues. Member Larkin, and I think the first thing that superintendents would be thinking about is what's going to happen to the status of the schools, because we have staff and students at risk. And the other conversations are happening and are happening now, but they're only formative. And our school district, meaning Bill and Dwayne and I, need to go down to the Minnesota Department of Education and talk about our own integration plan and what they're foreseeing in our future. So, that would be a January discussion. And then, we also need to meet with other alliances, if you would like to call it that, to see just how probable those are. And I would think that by mid-year in this school year and second semester, that we would be bringing some ideas forward. And I would think that that would be more at school board work-study sessions, so that you'd see what the conversation is going on. And at the same time, there's the parallel track of what is going on at the WMAP Joint Powers Board. But I know, having worked with Missy and I know in the future, working with the WMAP Joint Powers Board, we're one, we're going to want to be transparent, so we don't surprise people in what we're thinking. And that is why I had the conversation with Mr. Lester, that we have an issue with MDE already. And I think we'll have to see what some of, there's also a subcommittee on WMAP three point oh that will be working to give, to inform, not necessarily make recommendations, but at least inform the WMAP Joint Powers Board members on what's thought in the districts from a superintendent's perspective. So, the short answer to that would be probably March or April, but it may not be. The conveyance would be, I think, earlier, but alternate scenarios would probably be further in the year.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I would just, from my personal thought on the conveyance is, I'd be really concerned if we had to start coming up with additional capital dollars for someone else. We work very, very hard as a district. You know, our community supported us for us and if all of a sudden, you know, and not that I don't want what's best for the students, but on a selfish level from our district, we worked very hard to get our residents to say, yes, we want to be able to make the repairs and do the upgrades in the technology here. And to have that burden, you know, there, that's, that concerns me.
I think it's also concerning, and I, because the schools are not aligned with the mission. And if they were aligned with the mission, it might be more of a particular problem, but they're not. They've turned into art schools with an equity focus, but they are not the lab schools that we thought we were going to get.
I think we just have to, I think that one of the things as you guys move forward on this, and I won't be around for it, but in taking from what I have been through with West Metro, I think you really need to look at the history and the, you know, you talked about the three point oh, look at the two point oh, that is not successful. But you also need to look at some of the things that have happened in this past couple of years. And just make sure that, I think Bill's concerns are very, very strong and the way you lean is towards that. My concern is you have two schools hiring another superintendent at a high cost with one thousand students that, you know, I mean, you just even look at that right there. I mean, that's just something that has never been real settling for me, you know? I just think the financials are the strong suit there and I don't know how you could support that, going back to our community, saying that we're going to be doing that. But look, look at the past history. Just keep an eye on the past history and how it has grown and where it is at. I think that'll give you some of your answers.
Thank you.
I think one of the things that concerns me the most is that it's supposed to be set up for more integration and it's actually less. I find that actually.
Not way for a long time.
Yeah, I'm not even going to say how I find that. I just tell you, I don't, I don't find that comfortable.
Well, the situation that brought about WMAP back in the late nineties has changed. The integration requirements have changed, so we're in a totally different era. So, we need to look at it that way as well.
Yeah, true.
Member Landworth, and I discussed last week that Superintendent Lester is available to come out and to discuss the deliberations from his perspective. And I talked to him again today. And depending upon how quickly, any kind of resolution, if it does develop, he could be out as early as December or later in January or February, depending upon if there is a request for some kind of resolution, formal resolution on our opinion, if the school should be conveyed or not. And so, that may happen as early as December, it may happen later in the year. But I do think, because as Member Landworth said, the Joint Powers Board has to decide who's the employee that they have in mind by March, that in fairness to that process, the conveyance of the schools or not needs to be decided before then.
I think if you're going to bring out the superintendent from West Metro, I think that you should do it further in January. You have your two new members sitting and they can at least get some perspective if they're going to have to help move this forward.
Thank you for your. Bill? That concludes our report.
Good. All right. Thanks. Next up, move to our action items, is the audit report. The board will be asked to approve the audit report and we have Bill Holmgren, our Director of Finance and Operations from our firm, KDV.
I just might move around you. Okay. Chairman Bardell, Members of the School Board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. Tonight, we'll officially bring the audit report to you. Tonight, we have Matt Mayer here from KDV. They've been our auditing firm for the last few years and I think they do a very good job for us. But I'm going to go ahead and just turn it over to Matt and he'll give you the highlights of their report.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, thank you for the invitation to present this night to the public in a public setting here. We were here last week for your work session and went in-depth on many of the numbers and the results of our audit and just want to provide you a summary tonight prior to approval of the audit for the 2014 fiscal year. Our role as auditors is to come into the district at the end of each year to test, examine, and give an opinion on the financial statements that the district prepares, so users of them can be assured of their accuracy. We do that through our independent auditor's report, which is in front of the financial statements. And this year, as in years past, we provided an unmodified opinion, the best we can give the district. What that means is the numbers that are presented are materially accurate, they're a true picture of the district's financial position at the end of the last fiscal year. We also perform two compliance audits, one of them, a federal compliance audit to ensure that the dollars that you receive from the federal government are being utilized for their purposes. This year, we did a test of the child nutrition program and the special education program. We do it on a rotating basis. We catch the title programs in various years as well. And for this year, on child nutrition and special education, we had no findings, again, a clean opinion there. And then finally, our last report is on Minnesota legal compliance, and this is all of the state statutes that apply to school districts here in the state, making sure you're in compliance with conflict of, conflicts of interest laws, contracting and bidding laws, deposits and investments. And again, happy to report a clean opinion there. So, offering three opinions on the audit this year, and all three are the best that we can provide, so a very solid audit for the district for the 2014 school year. With that, I just want to touch briefly on your general fund operations to give you and the public a perspective on how the year went. You had a balanced budget, your final amended budget called for forty-three million dollars in revenue, forty-three million dollars in spending, and a modest increase in fund balance of about forty-five thousand dollars or so. The expenditure budget was well executed. You kept expenditures under that budget, they were at forty-two and a half million, about three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars under budget. Some of the revenue ultimately didn't come in as anticipated though. There was targeted services, some special education aid, as well as some desegregation transportation aid that was in the original plan for the budget and ultimately came in under the budgeted amounts by about a million dollars and a half. So, rather than the fund balance increasing by about forty-five thousand for the year, it did decline. It declined about eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars from the 2013 number and you ended the year just shy of an overall fund balance of about four million dollars. And to give you some perspective on that, we have this chart here, which shows the five year history of the general fund. You can see the high point for the general fund operations was back in 2011, when you had a little over five point eight million dollar fund balance. It remained relatively stable in 2012 and then ultimately declined the last couple of years with deficits of about a million dollars each. And you're ending the 2014 year with a three million nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar fund balance. Now, that's made up of various components. Portions of that fund balance are restricted by the state for specific purposes. You also have some internal set-asides. So, the overall discretionary fund balance, the unassigned amount is that top line in the bottom portion of the chart, two point four million dollars. And you can see how that compares to your numbers over the course of the last few years. You were hovering pretty steadily at four million for the 2010 through 2012 fiscal years and have spent that down each of the last couple of years. But to give you some final perspective on it, what I'd like you to do is look at fund balance, not necessarily in dollars, but as a percentage of spending. And that's the best way to give you some perspective on what your financial health is from year to year, because the district's budget is going to grow. So, even if you maintain a level dollar amount, you'd actually start declining in your overall health, because as a percentage of spending, that fund balance is going to go down. So, a combination of the actual fund balance going down in dollars, along with the increased budgets here at the district over that time, you're seeing that the fund balance went down from a high point, you're in the blue portion of the chart here, of twenty point two back in 2010, to a ending fund balance this year of about nine and a half percent. Now, that being said, that is the low point for the five-year period, but your fund balance policy that the board has established, that the district has, is a fund balance between four and ten percent. So, while you're at the low end historically, you are actually right in line with your internal policy and it's actually on the high end of your internal policy. So, again, So, again, that ultimately will be a policy decision. We've provided some averages for your peer group, which are districts between 2,200 and 4,500 in population, and that's in the tan portion of the chart, and then the green portion is all school districts statewide, to give you some perspective. So, again, that's an internal, that's a local decision as to where you'd like to be, but just to give you some guidance on where others are ending up, that gives you some perspective, I think. I'm going to leave it at that. We did, as I mentioned, provide you some analysis of community service, food service, some student count and numbers last week, but I think the key points are here, the general fund performance in relation to budget, and ultimately, your financial health at the end of the year is measured by fund balance. Be happy to stay for any questions, or follow up on any questions you might have from last week's presentation as well.
Do I have a motion? Move that forward?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion by Missy, second by Ted. Any questions, discussion, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then a motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Detective. Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda is our agreement with Northeast Metro 916. Board will be asked to approve the agreement to provide special ed services and related staffing from 916. Nicole Halby, our Director of Student Services.
Chair Bardell, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, last week brought to the work session, information on Northeast Metro 916 and the staffing and related services that we purchased from them. And this is an agreement, it's the first, and it'll be an annual agreement as a member with 916.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move that forward.
Second. Motion by Laura, second by John. Any discussion?
I just had a question.
Yep.
As far as our representation on the board of 916, is that governed by another document? I didn't see any of that.
This is just for special education and related services that we purchased from 916 to come and work into our district. This has nothing to do with board membership, or with services where we send our students to them. That's a different document.
Okay. So, it's very specific.
Correct.
Any other questions?
No, just a comment. From the way I understand this, this is what we've been doing all along, they just wanted to formalize. No.
Correct.
All right. Hearing no more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then a motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda is approval of the School Board organizational meeting procedures. Board will be asked to approve process for electing School Board chairperson based on whatever choose or order. Newly revised 10th edition is prepared by Karen Keppel November 29, 2011, and first Monday in January is rules for the organizational meeting. Superintendent Kelly.
Mr. Chair, Members, this was a discussion item for the last School Board meeting, and I said that we would be bringing it forward for approval at this meeting, and so, this is just merely a motion for approval for the, in preparation for the January meeting.
Anyone like to move it forward?
I'll move that forward.
Second. Motion by Missy, second by John. Discussion?
Just a question. I was reading the memo by Karen Keppel, our attorney. It said that the nomination for officers on paragraph one may be made by the chair, or the chair may call for nominations from the floor. Are we intending to follow our practice of the chair calling for nominations?
If you read, I think further on in that, it actually says, more commonly nominations are made by others versus the chair.
Right. It says it's recommended. I just want to clarify that we're going to continue our same policy of, or practice of having the chair call for nominations.
Oh, you mean just at the beginning of the meeting, then, meeting nominations for whatever position?
Right. That's what I'm asking. That are intended?
I wouldn't see why, personally as a superintendent, I wouldn't understand why we wouldn't follow it. I mean, where you always don't.
Yeah. Is there something in particular that hasn't happened, or you foresee happening that?
No, I just, I just saw this language for the first time, pretty much, then I just want to get clarification on that.
Yeah, I was reading it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Four topics.
Yeah.
I just want to mention, I was also at the Taste of Heights, the holiday kickoff. I forgot. It's a great time.
Four topics. Going on? I don't remember when it happened, or if we even talked about it, but the conclusion of the, maybe we did talk about this, not anything about it, but the fundraiser that we did with the city SECA for the coats and the hats and the mittens and stuff, that that actually came to fruition, and the stuff was actually delivered to the schools. I don't remember if we talked about that last week or not at the meeting, so.
I can't remember. There was a nice article on the paper.
I saw that, too, and, but it was just that, it was, thank you for everybody that came to the fundraiser and contributed. It was, the timing was, probably was, well, a week earlier would have been perfect, but it still worked out really well. There was certainly a need at the time that that stuff got delivered, so thank you to everybody that supported that. That was cool. All right. Four topics. Hearing none. We can adjourn this meeting at 8:56 PM.